Okay, they're coming.
DJ.
She's DJ, that's why. I'm gonna rename you. Sorry, that's my husband's name. You're Meredith. What are you gonna do, Kristi? Do the best we can. There you go. Who else is going by an alias? Let's see.
Is Raphael in, or is he's?
Um, he's in, but he's muted.
Yeah, he's there.
Raphael?
Yes.
Okay, we can hear you, great.
I'm not up video at all.
Okay.
You're on, Chris?
Yep, we're rolling and it looks like everybody that was in the waiting room is in. Wait, I still have somebody connecting to audio.
All right. You ready, you said, right?
Yep, just one moment. Looks like they're having difficulty connecting to the audio, but.
All right, well, let's.
Okay.
I'd like to call the Bradley Beach Planning Board Meeting of May 28 to order. Will everyone please rise for our pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm just gonna ask everyone, if you have a lot of background noise, please keep yourself muted until you need to speak. Otherwise, we get a lot of feedback. So, the 48-hour notice as required under the Open Public Meetings Act has been met as notice of this regular virtual meeting was emailed on May 12, 2020, and published in the Asbury Park Press, The Co-Star and The Coaster. Copy has been placed on the bulletin board in the Borough Office and a copy has been filed with the Borough Clerk. Chair Shaw?
Here.
Mr. Albiner?
Yes.
Mayor Englestad?
Here.
Mr. Waterman is not here. Mr. Gubatose?
Here.
Mr. Rosenthal?
Here.
Mr. John?
Here.
Mr. Marco?
Here.
Ms. Russo? Did not see any. Mr. Mayner? He was here a minute ago. Bob, you're muted.
Yeah, Bob, unmute yourself so you can roll.
Here.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. And also President Monica Kowalski, Attorney to the Board. Gerald Frida will not be with us this evening and Christine Bell will not be with us this evening. Okay.
Right.
Chair Shaw?
Approval of the minutes, has everyone had a chance? Well, I'm not gonna call it minutes. Kristi calls it minutes. I'm gonna call it an encyclopedia. And I wanna thank her for taking all this time and making sure that everything was written in there. Anyway, did everyone have a chance to read the minutes that had been posted?
Yes.
All right. Being that said, I would like to make a motion to approve.
I have one, there's a change with something I said that I said. There should've been commas inflection on page two. I have no problem with the dispensary in Bradley Beach. It's just the rest of it. It looks like I have a problem with that.
Okay, okay, let me just find it. The medical facility is one thing. He doesn't wanna see the Borough involved in a lawsuit.
Right, forever, but I think the medical facility is okay. Dispensary is good.
Okay, so, okay.
Yeah, just a comma there or something, so it doesn't look like against it.
Okay. Changes or recommendations?
Is there any others? None? Seeing none, I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the minutes.
I'll second that.
Mr. Mayner?
Yes.
Mr. Marco?
Yes.
Mr. John? Mr. Rosenthal?
Yes.
Mr. Gubatose?
Yes.
Mayor Englestad?
Yes.
Mr. Albiner?
Yes.
And Chair Shaw?
Yes. Next on the agenda is the Resolution Number 2020-09, Approval of the Amended Preliminary and Final Site Plan of 301 Main Street Holdings LLC, Block 59, Lot 9-2. Are there, did everyone have a chance to read that resolution?
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Mr. Gubatose and I had a discussion and I believe, Kristi, was it paragraph 13?
I believe so, yes.
Yeah. We have just slightly amended that paragraph to include the names of Mayor Englestad and Mr. Gubatose along with Mr. Albiner as objecting to the facade at the front of the building.
Yeah, it was number 13 on page five.
Yeah.
Okay. All righty.
I shouldn't say objecting to the facade, the particular design of the slats.
Right, right.
Right.
That I do remember being discussed.
Right.
In detail. Are there any other?
Mr. Chairman, I have another.
Go ahead.
I have one other question.
Go ahead.
In the section, in the section that summarizes the the requests from the planning board for the applicant to incorporate, I'm looking for the specific page reference, but right above the "All approvals granted herein are subject to the following conditions," there's a paragraph that recites requests made of planning board members, including, you know, the heights of the fence and so forth. I was wondering if we could add a reference to the movement of the placement of the garbage receptacle. That was captured in the notes, but it wasn't captured in the summary.
Yeah, I'm just gonna respond to that because I believe the reason, and I did highlight it on the revision I sent to you back, but maybe I didn't explain myself. I don't remember discussing this. But the actual change was made on the preliminary and amended final, I'm sorry, preliminary and final amended site plan. So, it doesn't have to be a reference in the relief granted because it was part of the application. But I can put it in, I'm just saying it's already included.
Okay, my recollection was that they actually had agreed to move it from the plans they had presented to us. I questioned the width of the driveway there and I thought they had agreed to move the.
Okay, I'll just double check if I need to amend the sentence. I will, not a problem.
Okay, thank you.
I'll talk it over with Mr. Sardo.
I don't remember that being changed.
I don't either, but
I'll review the record, not a problem.
Right, well, we'll double check the tape and everything else on that out.
Where was that again? Number?
That was the relocation of the disposal, the area that all the garbage was gonna be held at. Mr. Algubatose at the time had asked in reference to being able, for a fire truck to be able to maneuver around it, you know, to go out into Third Avenue. If I'm not mistaken, correct, Al?
Yes, that's correct.
It was my recollection that the change had already been made on the plans and that Jerry agreed with the change, so. But I have, you know, if that's the only issue, I can go back and double check.
If you would, perhaps, if I'm mistaken, yeah. I believe that was the case, though. Ms. Kowalski, you referenced it in item number eight?
Yeah, I think what was happening was the board was discussing the, or you referenced the movement, and I thought that the, in my notes, that you were referencing the change on the plans. So, that was my recollection of it and the discussion with Jerry was that he agreed with the applicant about the necessity to move that. So, I can, like I said, I'll double check the plan and I will double check the transcript. But that's my recollection, it was already amended in the plans and you were talking, you were questioning why it was moved.
Okay, that could be, thank you.
Are there any other requests for change or to be reviewed? Seeing no others. Ms. Kowalski, I would like to, correct me if I'm wrong, I can make a motion to approve the resolution upon review of number eight?
Yeah, you know, if we can, you know, normally in this situation, quite frankly, I would just ask that we take like a five-minute recess to take a look because I should be able to get it here. So, if you can just give me a minute.
We'll give you a few minutes.
Yeah, just give me a minute.
Five-minute recess then, to let you look into it.
I would like to make a comment. I'm not sure it really makes a difference on anything, but I've heard a few people in the public, I guess, mention that they didn't like the facade of the building that's going there. Too industrial. I don't mind it. Does anybody else have problems with that?
We've gone past.
Yeah. You can't rediscuss the application. That's absolutely improper.
Great, okay, good. So, I like the way it is, but just.
I would say that I would just chime in that reviewing the minutes of the last meeting, considerable discussion was held on the facade. And we certainly heard from the public regarding the facade. And I know that I, for one in the board, certainly took the public positive comments about the facade into consideration when we made our decision. So, I was certainly referenced the minutes from the last meeting, which are a small book unto themselves. But we extensively discussed all aspects of the project. And we were very attentive to the public comments that were presented. Which were, which were positive. So.
I agree.
For the record, I would say that I don't know if we have to expressly incorporate the minutes into this resolution, but certainly the minutes.
No, first of all, let me just stop, please. The minutes are, the transcript is actually already incorporated into the resolution by reference. So, that's automatic and the, if you, it's typically on the second to last page of the resolution. So, all of that is in there. So, once again, this is not the appropriate time to rediscuss the application. So, this is just a memorialization of the resolution, so. Two minutes.
Exactly.
Okay. Yeah, unfortunately, it's really difficult to see the plans on a phone.
Yeah.
Want me to try to pull them up on the screen, or?
Now, you know, Kristi? Yeah, can, do you have that ability? Because I can't, I can't pull it up from here.
Yeah, I think I do. I should have it, give me one second.
Oh, you know what, duh. Hello, I actually have the plans.
I was gonna say.
Because I actually did bring them with me.
Kristi, if you could bring them up, that'd be great for us to see too.
Kristi?
Yep, I'm working on it.
It's GHCDOCs, number 4329084.
Do you have it, Bill? Can you just share your screen since you've already located it?
Let's see.
Okay.
Interesting. All right, do you see it, Kristi?
No, I don't.
Hey, hey, Kristi?
Yes.
It's Mark San Giorgi, how's everyone doing?
How are you?
I'm doing well. I mean, I have the plans in front of me and I'm happy to share my screen.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so, yeah, no problem at all. It said host disabled attendee screen sharing right now. So, Kristi, I don't know if you have to give me the ability to do it.
Yeah, something happened with my settings because I couldn't make co-host either.
Yeah, host disabled attendee screen sharing.
I can do make host, hide non-video. It's not even giving me the option. Let me go to share screen. It says that the settings say that one participant can share at a time. Okay, who can start sharing when someone else is sharing? Okay. Okay, can you try now?
Yep, that worked.
You have it? Okay, Mark.
So, I'm just gonna make this bigger.
Okay.
And my recollection is, I'm gonna zoom in on the north west corner of the site. So, because we're zoomed in, Main Street is towards the bottom of the screen. We were talking about this alleyway here, I believe, and our trash enclosure was here. We had a spot here. And there's a question just about access. And I believe, I may be mistaken, but I thought we were gonna leave as is. And the reason being is that this striping had no curb lines. So, vehicles are able to drive through the striping to maneuver in this space. And because, I mean, this is 24 feet to the striping, but like I said, there's no curbs here, it's just striping. So, I thought the space was sufficient and Jerry Frida, and I apologize, my engineer of record, Matt Ward, is not on tonight. But, um, just, just also, you know, if you want us to switch the trash enclosure to this side and the spot here, that's really an insignificant change for me. It doesn't matter to me.
Mark, we lost our attorney. Her computer just crashed, so I can't have anybody discussing right now.
No problem.
You just called me. Hold on one second. Can you log in with your phone? Okay, okay. That's not good. She got a blue screen.
Monica, I mean, Kristi? Have, put your phone next to the computer and Monica could listen in and make her comments at the same time.
Okay, well, actually, I'm just, I'm letting.
Log in.
She's gonna re-log in with her phone if she can't get her computer to work. And actually, John Sardo just came in too, which is good. This is the first time I've had this much technical difficulty.
So sorry about that.
Are you back?
Yeah, I'm back.
Okay, all right. Okay, Mark, you can continue.
Hey, Monica, so, I was just trying to summarize, my recollection was the site plan that was amended and presented, which is what I have on the screen from the previous planning board meeting, has the dumpster located next to the alleyway, and there's a question about the movability of a garbage disposal truck, given the dumpster being here. And what I thought we had decided on was it was okay, given that there's 24 feet for this aisle. And additionally, that's only measured to the striping. This additional striping would be, would possess the ability for any trucks to turn around or do whatever they had to do because there's no curb here. It's just striping on the pavement.
Yeah, and I was gonna say, that's actually my recollection too, that it was already on the plans and the question was, why was it moved? And Jerry basically agreed that it was in a better location because it created better accessibility for the trucks coming in to do the receptacles, which is why it didn't need to specifically be pointed out as a variance because it was already on the preliminary and amended site plan.
And my notes reflect that same answer.
Al, does that answer your question or satisfy your inquiry?
Yes, it does. I know I was the one who asked the question to begin with and I just did not recall that resolution, but that's fine.
Okay.
So, that having been satisfied, do we have a motion to memorialize the resolution?
I will make a motion to memorialize the Resolution Number 2020-09, 301 Main Street, Block 59, Lot 9-2.
A second.
Mr. Mayner?
Yes.
Mr. Gubatose?
Yes.
Mr. Marco?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenthal?
Yes, yes.
Mr. John?
Yes.
Mayor Englestad?
Yes.
Mr. Albiner?
Yes.
And Chair Shaw?
Yes. Now, I know what had, we had the recommendation to the mayor and council was just sent to us. This was never posted as part of the agenda. So, Monica? Is Monica still on?
Yes.
Oh, yes, okay. All right, so, can we, did all the board members have a chance to look at it, or no? Kristi, you wanna ask them if they had a chance to read the recommendation to the mayor and council?
And it's come. You want me to poll the board?
Uh, yeah, please.
Okay. This is just a poll to see who was received and was able to review the recommendations of the planning board to the Borough of Bradley Beach regarding the referral of caveman culinaryian to the Borough Council upon open public meeting discussion of April 23rd. Chair Shaw?
Yes, I did read it.
Mr. Albiner?
Yes, I did read it as well.
Okay, Mayor Englestad?
No, I have not.
Mr. Gubatose?
Yes, I have.
Mr. Rosenthal?
Yes.
Mr. John?
No, I have not.
Okay, Mr. Marco?
Yes, I have, but not in detail.
Okay, and Mr. Mayner?
Yes, I have.
Okay.
So, Monica, this is the recommendation to the mayor and council. It seemed to me like it was in full detail of all the concerns that everyone had. I don't know where.
Well, I mean, you know, Mr. Shaw, let me just, let me just say for purposes that, you know, one of, one of the reasons we make recommendations is to make sure, you know, everybody is on the same page based on, you know, not only my notes, but the meeting notes. So, you know, it was, let's just say, it was, it was quite the effort, you know, on behalf of Ms. Dicker to compile the meeting notes and, you know, given the fact that they arrived late, you know, I needed to double, essentially cross-check all of my information as well. So, I do apologize, you know, for the fact that you just got it today, but, you know, unfortunately, that's just the timing involved. So, with regard to whether or not you are satisfied with the content, you know, if, if you feel that it can be moved forward, you know, we're happy to do that. It doesn't require a memorialization. It is just a recommendation. There were no notice provisions. So, you know, once again, if the board feels they need additional time to review it, that's fine. If the board is comfortable with moving it forward, you know, I know Mayor Englestad hasn't reviewed it, but then again, he's going to get it at the higher level as well. And he participated in the meeting. So, you know, whatever, whatever the board's behest is at this point is fine.
Well, like I said, I read it and from what I read, it did express everyone's concerns about everything, the traffic, the cafra, the dining upstairs, the B-Walk, B, like I said, it referenced everything and everyone's concerns. So, I'm gonna be very comfortable with moving it forward to the mayor and council to have it on their next agenda. Should I take a poll, or do I go with this, Monica?
You can take a poll to move it forward. You know, let's keep in mind that the real public comment with regard to, you know, the, any further award, you know, can come at the council meeting. Once again, these are recommendations based on our meeting with the public that are being moved forward. And again, if there are any questions, we always incorporate a full copy of the transcript or audio recording to refer back to. So, it's not only the information that was compiled from, you know, the RFP, the bid specifications that went out, the discussion that were held by, you know, board members and members of the public and the professionals. It's really going to be now a step-up phase for the council and then negotiation process on that end.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a comment or two.
Go ahead, Al.
So, number one, I think, I think this as a first draft is a, is a great effort. I actually was very impressed by what Ms. Dicker and Ms. Kowalski were able to pull together on, you know, a very challenging effort here. That said, one, I have edits that I'd like to suggest, but two, I, I'm concerned, given, given the nature of everything we're attempting to do here, which is have a very open dialogue that the, that the public can weigh in on and that the public can offer, you know, all of their recommendations. I'm just a little concerned that we would move this forward to the mayor and council without having provided sufficient notice to the public to review this and be able to provide their comment to make sure that, you know, that they, that. you know, that they, that they believe we've captured all of their concerns. So my preference would be to at least provide my own edits this evening, but, uh, but I personally, as much as I hate to say it, I, I think we should delay the submission to the mayor and council until the public has had a chance to review this.
Uh, Mr. Mr. Gubatose, if I may, that, you know, absolutely, we can post it for review. However, there will be no further opportunity to comment on it. That, the comments were made at the prior meeting. So if the, you know, if the board wants to take the time to review to, you know, do further inclusions, that's one thing. But you're not gonna be able to open up for another discussion on the recommendations.
Totally agree.
All right, so, uh, like I said, I, I feel comfortable with moving, uh, this to the mayor and council. And like you had mentioned, that, uh, further discussion could be, uh, taken at the mayor and council meetings in reference to this. And, uh, I have a question for you, Monica.
Yes.
For the, uh, for this, uh, recommendation to the mayor and council, uh, as far as it being, uh, posted at the Borough, uh, Clerk's Office and stuff like that, uh, does that one require my signature right off the get-go? Because I could sign it tonight and have it at the, uh, Borough Hall tomorrow morning.
I think I did give you a page on the last page for a signature, just, uh, for approval. It's not, once again, it's not a memorialization. It's just an approval to provide recommendations.
Right, so I will sign that and make sure that first thing tomorrow morning, it will be at Borough Hall in one, in someone's hands to make copies if anyone wants to, uh, get that copy, you know, anyone from the, uh, public.
That's fine, Mr. Chair. I would poll the board though, to make sure you have the approval.
Okay, yeah, well, that's what I'm, I'm gonna do. Kristy?
Okay, this is a
It's an, it's a mo- it's a motion to approve the recommendations to provide to council as opposed to retain for further edits.
Well, uh, before we take that vote, I actually have edits. I'd like to propose now, before we even make that vote, is, am I able to do that? There are, there are elements, I think, that have been omitted. Rooftop stability, the, the stability of the structure. I don't see a reference to that. I don't see a reference to
Al? Let, let's take one, one point at a time. The engineer had stated that, uh, there was a, uh, report that was made. And it was, uh, submitted to the mayor and council, uh, as far as the engineering of the, uh, structure, the roof, the building and so on.
I, I will say, you know, there, there was testimony with regard to that it was a concrete block foundation and, um, that will, that will definitely be, you know, should this matter go forward, that's a construction issue. So that's going to have to pass, you know, uh, construction code and all of that. So that's not so much within the purview of a recommendation for the contract, but that's going to be at another municipal approval level. So.
All right, your next point, Al?
All right, that was a point raised by the public. So I just, if the purpose of this is to capture public feedback, again, I think that should be included as the public raises concern. And then this calls to your point, we can certainly, uh, address that as a, as a building issue. I believe the public also raised the question of the, how we would manage, uh, fumes or odors from the kitchen and the ventilation system. I, if that's true, I did not see that captured in, in these notes. Do you, do you recall that?
I, I do rec- well, I, I recall seeing it in your notes. Um, I don't remember, um, having a detailed discussion about the capturing of, of fumes per se. I do remember the fryer discussion and the disposal of the oil. You know, but once again, when you're dealing with a restaurant situation, you're going to go through, you know, installation of certain mechanical equipment. That's all gonna be subject to a different permitting process, but, um, because they're going to have to install a hood and filters. So, you know, once again, that's, that's part of a regu- regulatory process based on the size and the type of equipment that they're using. But I understand you're, you're looking at it as an environmental concern and a smell kind of thing. But there there is a regulatory process for it. And if they meet the requirements based on, you know, whatever size grill they're using and a hood with scrubbers, that's going to be addressed in that manner.
Well, again, I'm, I, I gather that we have the ability to answer some of these questions as a planning, as experts on the planning board, our chair and, and you, Ms. Kloski, I'm just simply saying, regardless of how we would answer them, I think if the public raised the question, we have a responsibility to share that with the mayor and council. That's, that's my point. There is another question again that I believe was raised by the public.
Go ahead, Al.
There's, there is a section in here that captures questions related to lighting. But I believe one of the questions raised by the public that's not captured here was specifically the rooftop lighting. They wanted to understand whether there would be stanchions or, you know, how would lighting project across the rooftop? And I'm not sure that was adequately captured in these notes.
We referenced spillage, but I understand your concern. Okay. Once again, you know, if they do have to re-engineer the site based on a caffra application, all of the lighting issue, like the, the issues that you're talking about, they're not gonna be a final form. But I understand that's why I referenced it, I think, in a more general fashion that we're going to have to review or the engineer is going to have to review, you know, the spillage factor, neighbors and things of that nature. Like, I understand what you're saying. It's just, you're, you're basically, I, the questions were based on the design and I thought we addressed that, but, okay.
Yeah, and, and like it was stated out that, uh, this, uh, caffra is gonna change, whatever we say as far as, uh, the mechanical chase, uh, for the smoke and stuff like that, that was gonna go up. Uh, the rooftop lighting, that's all caffra issues and that's gonna wind up changing everything. So we could, we could actually spend hours discussing this. And, uh, that's gonna wind up being changed anyway, come later on.
No, I, I really understand. I, the, my goal in raising these points is not to try to resolve them in this conversation. It's simply to give the council members, besides the mayor and myself, the remaining three who did not participate, an understanding of the questions the public raised, which we can then all resolve via caffra and every other thing. But my goal would have been to have a very complete list of the questions and or concerns raised by the public and share that with the mayor and council. And I feel like we're, we're resolving some of them before, you know, the mayor and council are even aware that the questions were raised.
Um, we're not resolving any questions. We're just saying that, uh,
He didn't say that.
Excuse me, Gary?
He didn't say that. He said that the resolution would be on, on our hands.
Yeah.
So I, I just had one, uh, que- a comment or question at the end of, bottom of page four with regards to a liquor license. Uh, it says, "It is considered a bring-your-own-bottle establishment during dining hours." There's no, that is a separate, totally separate issue from this entire, uh, applic- way, whatever you wanna call it. That is a, uh, there's no B Y O provision in this RFP. That is a separate step that the, uh, the contractor would take, uh, after the fact. So there's no, we, there's, there's no discussion of a B Y O dur- in, in this. He has the potential to make that application to the appropriate authorities, but, um, it, it shouldn't be considered a bring-your-own, uh, with, with respect to, uh, how they pre- presented their, their proposal.
Okay, that's fine. And then, but there was significant testimony as to people being able to bring in, you know, wine bottles and concerns of the residents about having, you know, uh, people consuming, you know, alcohol so close to a children's play area. So I didn't, I didn't, uh, I didn't hear anything contrary to that, but we can certainly, you know, address that. I think I, what I put in there was that there was no current application pending at this point for
Yeah, I'm, I'm doing some speed reading because I'm just catching up to
No, no, we can, we can certainly revise that aspect of it.
But I think you're right. The public did raise questions that if it were to become B Y O, there was a proximity of the playground and at least the public raised concerns about
Yeah, I'm not questioning public comment. I'm questioning the fact that there's no, the whole B Y O concept is not part of this until after the fact.
Yeah, but the owner did place on the record that, you know, he, he would, he would allow, or I shouldn't say the owner, the proposed tenant did place on the record that, you know, he, he felt that people could bring their own. And like I said, that's why it was incorporated in that.
But that's, but that's not his fault.
I didn't say it was. I'm just saying that was the testimony on the record. So that's what we're addressing.
Okay.
Any other, uh, questions or, uh,
Just, just, just very minor. And Kristy, the, uh, the, the number in the pages, um, it, it's, they say of two, of two, of two. So it's like page four of two, page five of two, page six of two. So very minor.
Of the recommendations or of
What, what, what we received. My copy of it says page one of two, page two of two, then it says page three of two, page four of two, page five of two.
Yeah, mine doesn't say that. I didn't prepare the document either.
That might be a Google Doc versus a PowerPoint.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, the, the, sometimes the formatting gets wonky in the, in the email transmission. I don't, I don't understand why, but
I, I have pages, uh, one of, uh, two, uh, one of three and so on and so forth. Mine, mine looks good.
All right, I'll go buy a new computer tomorrow.
I have one of six, two of six.
Do you have another one now?
I, you know what, I actually believe I did and I've, I've lost it. So, uh, I'll let others talk. I just wanted to at least raise those questions. And if I come up with one more, I'll let you know before we finish.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else, Doug? Bob?
Well, I simply have to say that, um, if you were to poll the council, I will have to abstain simply because I have not had a chance to read this. And I'm not going to be a speed reader in this situation. I was unaware that it was set at three thirty. And I has really had, I simply haven't had a chance to read the full recommendation. I read a lot today getting ready for this meeting, but I wasn't ready for, I wasn't, uh, aware that that was coming in. So I haven't had a chance to read this. So I cannot really, uh, if I were to be polled right now, I'd have to abstain.
Fair, that's fair. You know, uh, so wh- where do we go with this, Monica?
Well, you have to just continue to poll the board and see what your numbers are.
Okay, Kristy, you wanna pull the board?
On what?
On the recommendation, uh, to the mayor and council.
Okay.
Of the salt project.
Okay.
I'm providing it to, as is, or, or move to amend for next meeting. That's, you, your original motion before Mr. Gubatose jumped in was to poll the board, and I believe you started. So I'd like you to finish with that particular poll. If the board votes to move it forward, you can move it forward tonight as is. And if not, we'll amend and you can do it next month.
Okay.
Unless you wanna withdraw your motion and just amend for next month, whatever, whatever your preference is, Matt, Mr. Mayor.
Let, let's poll the board.
Okay, so this is gonna be a poll on submitting it to mayor and council as is.
Right.
Yes.
Um, Mr. Albiner?
Yes, I think you should be forwarding to the council.
Uh, Mayor Englestad?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Gubatose?
I strongly disagree with forwarding it while it's incomplete and many of our members have not reviewed it. So I would say no.
Okay, Mr. Rosenthal?
I'm gonna say no. I read it, but I didn't read it in depth like Meredith. I skimmed through it pretty quickly.
Okay. Um, Mr. Jones?
I will abstain for the reasons I said earlier.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Marco?
I'll have to abstain as well.
Okay. And Mr. Maynor?
Yes, I move forward.
Yes, and Chair Shaw?
Uh, yes. What do you have there, Kristy?
I have four yes, two abstentions and two noes.
So we're, uh, deadlocked?
No, no, actually
So with the majority, no?
Majority, the majority would rule. And actually, an abstention, yeah, it's a four-two. But if you wanted to get really legally, technically, abstentions would count as yeses, but
Okay.
You don't have to go there. I'm just saying it's, it's a four-two.
Okay. Uh, all right, then, uh,
So Bill, you're gonna have that signed and you're going to, uh, bring a copy of this over to the borough?
Yes, tomorrow morning they'll have it at nine o'clock.
Okay.
Or, you know, sooner. But they'll have it. Okay, so, uh, that's being done. That, 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 okay. Our next, uh, planning board meeting is, uh, June twenty-fifth at, uh, six thirty P M. Kristy, am I correct?
Correct.
All right, and with that being said, uh, I would like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So I will see you next month?
Yes, June, uh, the twenty-fifth at six thirty P M. is the next, uh, planning board meeting. I wanna thank everyone and, uh, everyone, please stay safe and healthy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And to everyone.
Good night, everyone.